All the meetings are ordered. Have a prayer, then we'll have the pledge. Dear Lord, give us insight to lead with integrity that our decisions may reflect what is right and good. Keep us from short-sightedness and pettiness. Help us to make decisions that are for the good of all and guard us from blind self-interest. Dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek Your will in all that we do and say. Also be with Mayor Collins as she is traveling home from a missions trip. Be with her. In all this, I pray in Your name on that.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Make sure you got your pagers on.
Pagers?
Phone.
Phones, pagers.
Baker.
Here.
Barth.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Henley.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Approval minutes from the special council meeting, uh, the twenty-fifth of January. Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Jones.
Do I go?
Henley.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Approval bills.
I have a question on one, Ron. Uh, the fifteen thousand dollars that we're approving tonight for, for the economic development. Do we think we're getting our fifteen thousand dollars worth?
I feel we are. That was in the budget. We voted on that.
In all the, all the...
Huh?
Pollutants and stuff they've put out in the last two months, we've never even got them named out there for industrial part.
Any other questions on that? I know Diane is our representative and trying to get maybe another person from Hicksville, so I think that'll help.
Well, we shouldn't have to coax them to just mention that we have a lot of free, free land outstanding out there.
Yes, I agree. I know Diane's addressed Jerry.
I was there personally when she addressed it.
And, and I know that they came down, I think they came down two weeks and stopped that already.
So keep on.
Shouldn't have to.
Any other questions on the bills? Do I have a first? I make a motion to pay bills. Second.
A second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Henley.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barth.
Abstain.
Baker.
Yes.
Okay, also, there's a notice of public hearing from Hicksville Planning Commission. Do you have that in your packet?
No, it's just on the table tonight.
Okay. Um, Hicksville Planning Commission called a public hearing on an application for a lot split on Thursday, February the twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, starting at five in the office of the zoning inspector located 108 North Main Street. Uh, the application submitted by Life Line Connect is a request to split lots ninety and ninety-one at second edition with a physical address of two twenty-three West Edgerton Street. The request is to split point oh seven nine acres from both lots, more or less. Mike Bailey, zoning inspector. Any questions on that?
We've got a next one back here. Did everybody get one that was supposed to happen?
Yes. That's for you to put in the paper.
Mayor.
Yes.
Before you go on. I misspoke. I abstained from the minutes because I was not here. You know, I second motion, that's fine.
Oh yeah, you can second.
But I did abstain from my vote.
Okay. Right.
She corrected it.
Okay.
So just so you know.
So you had enough to pass it, right, Cheryl?
Okay.
Okay, boards and commissions, park board meeting minutes in your packet. Any questions on that?
I guess I have a question, Ron. When the final plans and everything are together, those are addressed into concessions. Will those be brought to us?
I would think so. Park board here.
I don't figure here. I know we talked here, talked to Kent, um, working when we checked with another company and they were higher than Feller and Finch for the construction and design. Eric had worked up some prints when he was on, as park board president. Tweaked them a little bit, but definitely want to make sure that the architect gets us all the, the final renditions. And I know Val was gonna call them last week and talk to them real quick about a grant, nature works grant, and anything else that was out there, but, uh, she was gonna call Feller and Finch and see how far along they were on it.
Looking good right now. Lots leveled. Okay, uh, no other questions on the park board minutes. How about the revolving loan committee minutes, January the ninth? Pretty well self-explanatory. Any questions on that?
It's pretty well set in stone now, right?
Yes.
So.
Literally. Okay, cemetery board, Sheila, you had some minutes there?
Yeah.
Any questions?
I do when it comes to the report.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna mention it, but you can't.
Mm-hmm.
You wanna go now?
I can wait till we get to the reports, or you wanna? Yeah, okay, I will.
Cemetery board, we're on that, I'll go ahead.
Yeah. Um, Josh Metz has resigned and he was the manager out there at Forest Homes and they're looking for someone. So, you can send your resume to Zane Zedik and his address is one oh seven seven zero Rosedale Road, Hicksville. And they're gonna take the applications up until February twenty-second, so anybody's interested, you can. I have his phone number if you're interested.
He's gonna work through March the first, correct?
Right.
He sure done a nice job.
Yes.
Yes, he did, he did. That's too bad, but, so, that's all I have to report on that one.
Okay. Um, council committee reports, sidewalk committee, Sheila.
Yeah.
Anything you wanna add? Miss, you had the second reading tonight?
No.
First reading? Okay.
We had a meeting here a couple weeks ago and I asked the guys to rethink it and did you get any questions from...
Well, I, I think on top of, of asking us to rethink, then we also got some information from Kent and some from the solicitor.
Yeah, we got some.
So I think we need to get back together again and...
Yes.
Before we do anything with this.
I was gonna say, we don't have to have a first reading. Actually, I brought that because you guys asked me to do that.
Right.
But I thought maybe that would be good food for thought along with the other stuff.
Yeah, so let's, let's pass on reading this tonight and then...
Right.
Whenever you can set a meeting would be great.
But I was wondering if you got any, uh, questions from the residents or...
None.
Nobody said anything?
Lot of feedback.
I had a few, um, I had one guy that was, wanted me to let it know in the meeting that he was for the three dollars. And then I had another one say that he wasn't interested in paying for other people's sidewalks. And, actually, I had two of them. And I have a lot of people that think it's gonna be okay, but there was a lot of people that have already put theirs in that are really upset.
Well, that's why we had three readings, a lot of discussion and have the public...
And rethink, you know, think about it because it, it sounds nice, you know?
The only person that complained to me was because they had no sidewalks currently.
Yeah.
And I think that you have to tell you, they don't have sidewalks. I'm trying to explain to them our plan was to add sidewalks in the future as funds come available. Then they kind of understand a little bit more, but...
And then Mike has a really good idea. I don't know if you wanna bring it up now or if you wanna come?
I did.
It's kinda similar to what we had, but...
You know, Diane had asked for public opinion on that stuff and so I've been asking different people, different, you know, times of being out there and, you know, I thought if we, we couldn't, you know, I'm not for the three dollars personally, but, um, you know, and I've had people for it and against it. Um, but I was thinking if, you know, we could help the, the residents if they had to pay for their replacement or pieces or sections of their sidewalk, if we couldn't hire a contractor to come in and do it in a group kind of, um, job where it'd be less expensive for a homeowner who only had to place, replace one section and/or some had to play, replace three. It's hard to get a cement truck in there to do one section. So my thought was if we could, uh, if we, we kept the ordinance the way it was now, but have the city get a contractor come and fix places that were needing replaced or fixed, um, it would definitely save the homeowners, um, and cost them less, I think, if, for the repair and...
But you're still gonna have a great deal of people that say, "Uh, I'll take care of that one square or two square."
Yeah, and they, you know, they can do that. Some of the people can't afford it, you know? We talked about how they could afford it with assessments and different things like that, but they're still gonna get a better deal if we had a contractor come in and do a group of them rather than one or two.
I don't remember if I mentioned it in the email that I sent to everybody, but that is, I mean, there's several different ways, I mean, I have a bunch of ordinances, but that is a, that is a somewhat common one where the own property owners are still responsible for it, but the village basically or the municipality contracts for the work to be done and then the people have the option, if they, if they can afford it, they could just pay the, you know, hey, here's what your section of the bill is.
Right.
You pay it, or they could assess it or have it put on like the real estate taxes over some period of time and those vary too. I mean, some of them are three years, five years, seven years. Now, the village is coming up with some upfront money when they do that.
Pretty much, yes.
But that, that is one of the, that is one of the options. I mean, you've got a lot of them that are like our current ordinance, got some of them where, are like our current ordinance, but say if they give you notice that you gotta fix it and you go get an estimate and you show it to whoever at the village within thirty days and then they okay that that's the work that needs to be done and then you have the work done within thirty days, the village will give a credit towards, you know, to help offset the expense a little bit to make sure it gets done in a timely manner. I mean, there's about as many ways to do it as you could imagine.
You know, if we put that, put it back on the residents, you know, be responsible, it'd be nice to try to save them some money in some capacity, um, even with full new replacement, complete or bits and pieces, that was my thought.
So the committee, okay.
Yeah, we'll set up a meeting after this one.
Okay.
Same way with ordinance. We need to set up an ordinance meeting.
But, Mayor, I had a few people in the store. Um, I only had one person talk negative against it. Everyone was in favor of the three dollars.
Okay.
So, and that's usually pretty good sounding. You get a good cross-mix in the store.
Yes, you do.
Well, yeah, that's your store too.
Water and sewer committee, do you have anything you add to that?
Well, you got, you got some minutes there in front of you. I know we had a town hall meeting, um, not last year, it was Thursday prior, uh, with the residents on Havert Drive for the upcoming project out there. I know Pete was there and I appreciate the committee and Jesse and, and Kent and then Jeff being there, but, uh, had a meeting with them. Some were not real happy, some were okay with the project and, and what's getting done out there, but I think it was an informative meeting, uh, with what we had happen.
Yeah.
It was really good turnout, I know, uh...
And I wasn't there.
Oh yeah.
I mean, and I wrote...
That's right, you and Diane were out. You should've been there, but...
That's why we had a good turnout.
I know. Uh, if I can give Mr. Martin credit, he had passed out some flyers around High Street. Appreciate you doing that. And like I said, it was informational type of meeting. Um, I know then past that, uh, we had a water sewer meeting, uh, we're taking a look at some future rates changes and then Dawn had some increases that she wanted to do with the, um, deposit fee with, um, residents that had to pay a deposit for, for starting up a new account. Um, anything else? I know another big factor we had going on with Kent and EMHT was their administrative and observation, uh, contract request. Uh, we got them to lower it down to about a hundred and eighty-four thousand plus some change, plus the seventy carryover, so we're basically gonna be looking at the new contract that hasn't been, I don't think we brought it tonight, right? Um, but the, just to give you heads up.
Well, no, it's in the packet, so people can look at it.
Right.
Probably gonna have to make a determination if we need, we can't go up too much.
Right. Um, but it's down to about with the, um, Havert Drive project, the Maine Bryant project, and then, uh, any continuation of, you know, warranty or inspection afterwards through two thousand eighteen. Um, but we're also possibly at Chicago Avenue. Um, that's what they're presenting to us. We can yea or nay it or...
But essentially, all they did was go from two hundred and four thousand to a hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Basically.
And your guys are good with that?
No. Not really.
No, I can't say I'm...
But, but, when you, when you do a contract like that, cause...
I've never seen an engineering firm...
Exactly.
That could charge from one date to the next. You are always charged by man hours.
Right, agreed.
And I don't know how this company, and just out of the blue, they just come in and go, "We're gonna need those two hundred and four."
Well, we, we asked them that. We were on the phone with them, Kent was on the phone with them. I sat in a, a meeting, Cheryl's been talking to him about contracts and payouts and everything. And we were kinda asking, "What, what are you expecting here on a daily basis?" And they threw out there about twenty-eight thousand dollars a month. I was like, "Wow."
You have a desk paying on the eight hours per day.
If they're working, if they're not working, right.
They're even counting weekends. They go from January first to January thirtieth?
We're, we're not real happy about the contract, you know? That's, they have to throw a contract at us, we can yea or nay it and say, you know, "We'll give you whatever. Um, deal with it, work with it. If you come back, then with more." They keep saying, "We don't wanna come back and ask for any more. It shouldn't cost as much."
I understand, Cheryl.
Yeah, it is. It's, it's all sales. I mean, it's, it's their business, you pay for their time and their expertise.
Well, I hope you, y'all that are in charge of doing that don't...
But we're all in char, we're all in charge.
Charlie's gonna have to bring all this later.
Right. I'm just saying, I mean, and I don't think the committee in general is real happy about the total cost of this.
What did we carry over on the first two projects?
Well, as, as of the bill you paid tonight, the twelve thousand dollar bill, that finished off that first contract, so that's not part of this equation. The current contract that we carried over, we're still showing about seventy thousand five hundred that we can still work with. I mean, it's still active, for lack of a better term. So that should last for a little bit. I guess worst-case scenario, if they say they don't come back with anything else, you guys vote their contract down on the twentieth. We'd say, "Well, get something else to us super quick." Or you can decide, "We're done with you after the seventy thousand runs out." You'd hire a second engineering firm, come in and take over, but you're gonna have to pick a firm, which means you don't have to do the ranking and all that. And, I mean, it's, it's doable. I've talked to some other firms, I said it happens all the time. Doesn't mean you gotta like it, 'cause it would create some headaches with it can be done, so it's gonna be totally up to you guys when it comes.
Is that money used for some of the corrections that Ron pointed out in the previous meeting?
Corrections.
Corrections.
The engineering is all technically done. If stuff comes up during the projects, yeah, some of that money's used for that.
But the majority is add-on.
Uh, major?
Any reworks and stuff that, that were not on those prints, like raising all those catch bases and stuff, that's gonna be additional cost because those were the elevations set for them.
Yeah, we're working through that part. But I'll, we'll just move on to Clearview and these two coming up. Um, yeah, if they would run into an unknown that nobody knew about, yeah, they'd be part of that engineering, whatever needs done. A good share of it's observation, a good share of it's behind-the-scenes doing, um, the pay requests, which should be saving some money there, 'cause I think Sharon, I finally got it through their heads how it needs to be done, so that she's got it straight. Um, I mean, there's, I guess, a lot, well, you can read through their contract and you can read all the stuff they say they're giving you. No, I'm not sitting there saying, "Go ahead and vote yes on it on the twentieth." I think it's a bit much.
Yeah, I think it's twice as too much.
We could hire our own inspector for peanuts.
And we can do that.
Certainly.
It just goes by the prints, make sure it's...
I'll resign from council and you can hire me for two hundred dollars a day instead of twenty-eight thousand dollars a month.
Hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars for the inspector.
Yeah, mm-hmm. I won't even charge you lodging.
His wife.
Yeah, so anyway, you got two weeks to think about it.
Okay. I encourage people to read the packet. Like I said, we've talked about the committee several times on the phone with them, so...
I didn't get it to the end of the packet because I was getting too mad.
Well, like I said, you know, everybody keeps coming to us, "Why are they charging this much?" You know, I don't know, I'm not in their business. I don't know why they charge what they do.
Hopefully, the committee comes back and, and is in favor of not paying them that much.
We said, propose a contract, we got them to lower it a little bit through the, by the phone conversation and, like I said, I'm not real happy about it. I don't think anybody on the committee is.
Yeah, but by the time they lowered it, through the seventy, which was, which should be float money, threw that back on top of what they lowered and their additional three or four items, you're back over to...
Two fifty-four.
Two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars?
Absolutely.
So, that's like the car dealer going, "Well, I'll give you, I'll give you forty thousand dollars for your trade-in, but your new car's gonna cost you ninety thousand."
Absolutely. I agree.
It's just, it's just a paper shuffle and I don't fall for it.
Yep.
Okay.
So, any other comments on...
We spent one, two years doing that.
Yep.
Two...
About the deposit, we have Troy, do we have to vote on that? Is that just policy?
That's a policy, and the change probably should be moved on though, so that it can get put in the policy.
Does it?
Yeah.
Somebody wants to bring it up or whatever. It doesn't need to have like a formal resolution.
It doesn't. Well, Dawn came to the meet.
Did she have that all finalized yet?
She's working on, uh, I think the changes within.
The blue book.
The booklet.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, no, I don't, didn't know where that's at, excuse me.
Right. So I know Dawn had came to the meeting and asked to, right now it's a hundred dollar deposit for new accounts. By the time they, they have shut off paperwork administration, um, final payout, which is usually delinquent on some of these, that's why she wanted to bump it up to two hundred. Our average delinquent account is running a hundred and seventy-four dollars. Well, you take the totals out of all, number of people per month and she gave it, if you wanna see it, I got a, is she right here, from August through December, um, has several, you know, accounts that were delinquent. Um, that deposit would've covered that amount, but she said it's an average of one seventy-four oh four a month.
I thought it was only three years ago that we adjusted all those rates to, and changed who was responsible for bills and everything, so that we were always in the black on that.
Oh, for deposits and everything, for new accounts? You wouldn't know what that's...
It's been a hundred since...
It's been a hundred for a long time, I think.
Since Dorky was here.
What we talked about was...
Landlords are responsible.
We talked about was shutting the water off and not letting...
Yeah, maybe they'll shut it off, just like, as soon as they're delinquent, instead of waiting like two, three months. It still ends up being about two months, 'cause you still read them most behind, you know?
So we need to just, uh, a vote?
Right, and motion, somebody motioned to approve that.
Entertain a motion?
And that's all, your motioning is the two hundred, not the thirteen and twenty percent?
No, no, no.
Raise the deposit.
All those numbers are being looked at.
Okay. Okay. Entertain a motion?
I'll have a motion to raise the deposit rate.
I would second it.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Baker.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Henley.
Yes.
Okay, anything else we have to act on? Okay. Thanks, Mike. Uh, Hicks TV minutes are in your packet. Any questions? Bill, anything self-explanatory?
Has the sound been better? I mean, I know we, since the last time you heard at home?
I brought that up and I asked the, I asked the board members in attendance if they had heard anything. Diane said that the people that have been coming to her fairly regularly complaining, "We're not complaining anymore." And, uh, I've noticed the, I mean, there's an appreciable difference in both video and the audio qualities as we have to recruit too, so...
Okay, good.
The best of our ability, that's my understanding, we have dealt with the issues and we're sounding a little bit better.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill. Um, Kent, administrator's report?
Uh, Ron.
Yes.
We're gonna do the police and fire committee.
Sure. Sorry. Yeah, any other committee reports, I'm sorry.
Police and fire, uh, committee has been meeting, myself, Ron Jones, Mike Henley, to select our chief, Monty Ballinger's replacement. Extremely tough job to replace a good man like Monty. Uh, we got, I believe it was seven applications, some were from quite far away. Um, we, we all worked on it together quite well. We all came to the same conclusion and that would be, uh, to ask the, our mayor to recommend that we make Lieutenant Stickney, Kurt Stickney, our new chief.
Okay, I'll recommend Kurt Stickney.
I would go ahead and make the motion to accept the mayor's recommendation to hire Kurt Stickney as our new police chief.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Roll call.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Henley.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Troy.
Congratulations.
Kurt is in the crowd. You wanna stand up, Kurt, so they can see who you are.
Thank you.
I think we owe Monty.
Oh, absolutely.
Monty, Monty, your chief.
I owe Monty a gratitude. Thank you for your service, sir.
I might wanna add that, uh, there's a, a big party for Monty at the Huber on the seventh...
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Yep.
From one to three. And that would be an excellent place to, uh, take large gifts and large amounts of...
Amounts of something, money.
Gift cards and money and take them up there and show them how much we've appreciated
Gift cards and money, and take them up there and show them how much we've appreciated what he's done here in the Village of Hicksville for thirty-six years.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Any other committee reports? Kent?
Just a couple things. The EPA, PA paper, it was in your packet, it's that resolution of violation. That goes back to the episode of late spring, early summer, when our bugs all got wiped out. So, so, pretty much back to normal. We didn't get dinged or anything, but that's all that is. We've not had any violations since. And then as far as Clearview Haverdive project, talked to AEP a day last week. They're planning to take the street lights down on February thirteenth, which would be a week from today. And then I think the contractor is maybe gonna be a week after that, depending on the weather.
I talked to them today, they're gonna start moving equipment this week, and hopefully they're gonna turn dirt Monday.
Okay, well, that's different from what I heard.
So I just talked to them today.
They were handing out flyers today and letting residents know that Monday they're gonna start down by Clearview or they're gonna start working Monday.
As far as the...
I mean, just by the time they're taking...
They said they are going to take the mailboxes up, and when they're done with the, like on a daily project or a daily basis, what drive, what mailbox they took up, they're gonna put them right back in, so...
Yeah, I called Mike's the...
I hadn't thought that, so that's what we were hoping at least.
Yep, so that's what they told me today. The gentleman I talked to today was, I believe he said he was, I guess, the main guy from the office.
I mean, Mike.
Mike. And also the gentleman that's gonna be out there on a daily basis, I guess.
Ron, Ron Parker, he's the, he's the resident inspector.
Yeah, when I called them, they assured that maybe a day, mailman couldn't get there just for one, but they're good company. I do know that.
I just took my mailbox out and just put concrete blocks down.
I saw that. Is that yours?
There, that way, move it and back and forth wherever you want.
Okay. Okay, Kent, no, that's pretty much you. Okay. Troy, you're up.
First thing I have is a second reading ordinance, two thousand seventeen dash zero one. Second reading by caption only, ordinance to levy a tax to fire protection in the Village of Hicksville, directing the Pines County Board of Elections to submit a valid question to the electors and authorizing an additional tax levy for such purposes. And then, resolution two thousand seventeen dash zero one, resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, honoring former police chief Monty Ballinger with presentation of his service weapon and badge and writing for release of claims related to said weapon. And then the rest of the stuff on the list, on the table was the, a proposed sidewalk ordinance regarding the three dollars. What I did was I, I focused on that ordinance. If it's gonna go forward, then you'll see like the ordinance to create the new sidewalk fund, we'd have to do that. I'd figure like we needed to get that set up until we were really sure we were going that way. That'd be easy to do. And then we'll have to update some other ordinances. Particularly, we'll have to add the three-dollar fee in, and the ordinance discussing the utility bills. And then there are a couple of other ordinances. Kent has brought to mind, one is referenced in the ordinance that I prepared, but there is a section that basically says that the village residents, the owners of the property have an obligation to maintain the sidewalk. So we need to do some work on that, because I think, as you'll see, I included in the proposed ordinance, it still seems to me that it'd be appropriate for the, the occupants that are residing in the house adjacent to the sidewalk should still be responsible for snow removal, keeping it free from dirt, debris, things like that. But we don't wanna have that, we wouldn't at that point have the general language in there, they're responsible for the maintenance, because that's what the village would be assuming by taking the three dollars out. And then I think those, those updates are also on there because of things that you mentioned, that Dawn had, or was raised in the water sewer committee, that Roberta was still looking at some rate-related issues, so that's, I'm sitting back until somebody tells me they need me to do something on that. And then the last thing on Haynes Truck, and there's no new update on that as of today. That's all I have, Ron.
Thanks, Troy. Police chief, do you have anything to report?
I don't have anything, sir.
Okay. Fire chief, I see you just walked in.
Yeah, here just in time.
Yeah.
He's standing out there at home.
I, including in the packet, the final numbers for the end of the year.
I think everybody got that right in the packet.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's about all I have for fire.
The total losses, is that higher than usual?
Yeah.
That says over a million dollars.
We had the Smith Street fire of the old hospital.
Okay.
It was last year. That's the majority of it.
So anything else?
Nothing on fire. EMS is next door, training on the new power load for the cot. They got that in, and it'll be in service after tonight.
Beautiful. Scott.
Thank you.
Good work.
That's all I have.
Thanks.
Guys were busy last year.
A little bit.
Thank you. Nothing else on the EMS.
Ron, ask, fire chief question.
Sure.
Has anything been thought about or discussed or planned for the old cots?
Not at this time anywhere. Yeah, we really don't have any old cots, because we replaced the two. We got a new one, a new used one from the state earlier this year. Or, or the last year.
Yeah, but the cot that replaced, where'd that go?
There's three over here in the garage.
Okay.
Of varying ages, there not all.
Yeah. And...
But I guess where I was going with that, the ones that had the hydraulic leaks and things wrong with them, I still think would be very advantageous to this community to get them fixed, right out there in Industrial Drive, get them fixed, and then put them on a, in a, an emergency website and try to get them sold. Cause they, they are worth a whole lot more money than we'll ever see from an auction here at the village, or anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other questions for the fire chief? Okay, Cheryl?
Um, yeah, the first thing you have is from Chapman and Chapman. They're the CPAs that work with Borma, which is with our medical and dental insurance, giving us the state of health care eleven days into the Trump presidency, the update. And then you also have the cash statement for the month of January. The two thousand sixteen cemetery financial report. The revolving loan report for January. We had another one payoff. The income tax report. This year, Kim is going against her own numbers, so she's gotta dig in, make them look good. And we also have the January month-end report from the mayor's court and the police department from Julie.
Do we have any questions on those reports? Okay. Mayor's report, Diane had a business, an industry meeting back in the twenty-sixth of January. There, Mike and myself, I guess, and the mayor. Great turnout. I would say three-fourths of the industry, people were there. Lot of input. That was, there was a gentleman, I do not know his name, from Jobs, Ohio, and very interesting. And the one thing that was brought up was about the phone service in Hicksville Frontier. A lot of people are having trouble, so... Congressman Lada's office was there, so they're looking into that, so... And I think Congressman Lada is on the chairman of the communications committee, so we may get some results. So if anybody else has had trouble, hopefully there's help on the way. But that was one of the big hangups, was the phone service here in Hicksville.
That and I, can I add something to?
Sure, absolutely.
Well, we have a lot of good companies in town looking for workers, good quality workers. You know, we're from all different facets of companies, industries, gas stations, and care facilities, and they are having kind of the same issue of finding a quality worker, so we got a good town, we got a lot of good job openings and a good community, and I know if you're, if you know anybody that's looking for work, like I said, quite a few people are looking. And they all kind of have the same message, good quality workers and dependable and, and everything else, so... And keep that rolling in Hicksville, keeping the jobs in town, which, which helps the community and helps the businesses and overall impact.
I imagine there were thirty people there at this...
Yeah, and I think they, they all said the same, the industries and retail, and they all had the same...
Yep.
You're not, well, someone's willing to work.
You don't wanna be. You're not working now, it's because you don't...
They're willing to work, there's jobs.
And they're good companies.
But a great turnout then. Very productive. You had the handout from the CIC, they're different projects. You have what they're working on. Hicksville High School's post-prom fundraiser dinner. Hosting a Fazoli's Dinner fundraiser on February the tenth from five to seven PM at the high school commons. Tickets can be purchased from any junior class student, class of two thousand eighteen, or from the post-prom committee member, Natalie Captain, Lisa Denning, Chad Yoker. See, all dinners, adults are eight, include salad and breadsticks. Children, twelve and under's five dollars. So support your school, Hicksville High School Post-Prom Committee. Also, this month is Ford County Career and Technical Education Month. And also Joyce Huttman has resigned as beautification coordinator. How many years has she done that?
Just a couple.
Two.
Had a great job, so I don't know if they're looking for somebody...
I'm sure we are.
You're on that, aren't you? Okay. So we wanna thank Joyce for her service to that, so...
Absolutely.
Anything else needs to be brought before the council?
I have one thing, Mayor.
Go ahead.
And that big fancy, I love sign out there for Industrial Drive, it says lots for sale. And I kinda understand why it says lots for sale, because that's by the way the other guy's name's on there. We need land for jobs on there. We need free lots, free ground, not lots for sale.
It's a good point.
Maybe you haven't even seen it, but...
Oh, yeah. Signs are nice.
The one big sign says, lots for sale.
Put free land.
On there doesn't say...
Free lot.
Land for jobs.
Okay, is that on our website? Right?
Well, as long as you don't cause confusion for people, cause the only three lands, there are a couple lots left on the old part. And that's the only ones we're concerned with. It's the only ones we're advertising for.
So, good point. Let's see, who's on the sign committee? Myself, Nub Keys, and Tony Nicewonder. And Kent. So... I'm looking at you, Kent. You're looking, Dave. Keep looking. Well, that'd be a good point, though, Ron.
I mean, I don't care if the lots for sale stay up.
Is there another place?
It shouldn't be that hard to put a, put that block.
Isn't there another empty sign there?
Oh, there's a couple of them.
Okay, then I think growth.
Somehow we need to let everybody driving by know that they can get a free lot back there.
Yeah, they could basically just say like...
Exactly.
Yeah. And something to contact. Village of Hicksville.
Cause we have no contact on that.
Yeah, we put that road in, let's see what happens.
If you put that land for jobs, contact the Village of Hicksville.
Anything else? Good point.
I don't know, real quick, Hicksville Rotary Club's All You Can Eat Annual Pancake Sausage Supper is this Saturday at the high school commons before the Pettysville game. Hicksville's got great basketball teams and great wrestling teams going on, and academic different things. Four to six this Saturday at the high school, and then come out and enjoy a great basketball game afterwards, but All You Can Eat Pancakes and Sausage.
Swing and Trace, isn't it?
Uh, we play Pettysville on Saturday, yeah.
Okay, Saturday, okay.
The Greens, you have anything you wanna add? No? Dave? Okay. Anything else brought before this council? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would make that motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Start it. Roll call, please.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Henley?
Yes.